Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 3th Community Hall Meeting. We have one item on the agenda. It is the Downtown Civic Core Vision and Action Plan Update. John Cullum.
Good evening, Council President and Council Members. It's a joy to be here tonight. I'm John Cullum, redevelopment manager with the Community and Economic Development Department, and I'm here with.
Amanda Free, the Assistant Director of Economic Development.
So we're going to give you a quick overview of the presentation tonight. We're here to give an update on the status of various projects and initiatives that are included in the Renton Downtown Civic Core Vision and Action Plan, or Civic Core Plan for short. Tonight's presentation is broken down into several sections, including major projects that are destined to have a large impact on the downtown civic core. The latest on infrastructure improvements and public art in downtown. Some projects that are on the horizon for downtown. And then finally, what's happening in the area of small business assistance and community and regional partnerships that are important components to implementing the Civic Core Plan's recommendations. So the Civic Core Plan, as I think you probably know, was developed in 2017 and adopted by City Council in January of 2018. So it's a little over five years old now. Although the majority of the project's recommendations and changes provided within the plan for the downtown civic core situated around the piazza, the pavilion, the current transit center in the city center parking garage, the broader downtown business district really serves as the planning boundary for the Civic Core Plan, as you can see on the screen here. The plan provides a vision for specific actions that take advantage of future possibilities and opportunities for Renton's downtown. Some of those include assessing and reimagining public spaces like the piazza and the pavilion, connecting those spaces with downtown's local destinations, building upon the emerging restaurant and retail clusters that can support the area's population growth, and celebrating the racial diversity of Renton as an opportunity to become a cultural center. So I'm going to let Amanda get started with the impactful projects that we're going to go over their status with you tonight.
Thank you, John. There are seven significant projects that are being designed or underway that are intended to have a major impact on the downtown core, the downtown business district, and the greater downtown area, as well as the implementation of some of the changes we anticipate with the Civic Core Plan. All of the projects shown have the years that they are planning on construction starting, with the last one starting in 2027. One of the major projects is the Pavilion Market and Food Hall. We've previously brought this forward. The current pavilion is being redesigned for a year-round market and food hall. The design is in the final stages to include two anchor tenants, two large vendor stalls, 12 small vendor stalls, and a kitchen classroom community space. The team consists of Public Works, Parks, and CED with all other departments being called in as necessary. Much focus has been placed on the flexibility with the space, and the design choices reflect that vision. Another effort is the branding and name of the market, to find opportunities for uniqueness and a way to stand out to general visitors. We've received a $1.5 million federal grant from the Small Business Administration and continue to focus on supporting and engaging that community within Renton. Construction is anticipated to start in early 2025, with completion of the city improvements later that year. Interior improvements for the anchor tenants and the vendor stalls will be completed by those tenants and in partnership with the operator. The ultimate goal for the market is opening before March 2026 in advance of the World Cup. The next project is the Piazza Logan Avenue Gateway renovations. To ensure that the area around the pavilion can fully support the new use of the building and create an environment that provides indoor and outdoor activation year-round, we're looking on plans to renovate the Piazza Plaza area and lay the groundwork for Logan Avenue becoming a festival street. And we're also renovating the Gateway Park to accommodate those important family-friendly elements. These spaces are collectively envisioned as a great central gathering space for the Renton community and a primary destination when visiting downtown, with year-round activation working with the pavilion's new role as a retail and dining center. The city desires to ensure that all projects and future development in the area include active, inclusive, and inviting public spaces that are appropriately designed, connected, managed, and programmed to work as a cohesive district. Late last year and early this year, staff worked with the firm framework to develop a master plan for this series of the public spaces in this downtown core. Design team consists of Gran Babat Architects and Hewitt Landscape Architects Studio. Some of the elements being considered as part of the renovations include a public restroom, a play structure, shade structures, outdoor seating for the public market, flexible areas for events and mobile vending, cantenary lighting, public art, and we're also evaluating programming and improving the infrastructure for the farmer's market and providing greater flexibility for event layouts and connecting and activating the edges, alleys, and surrounding sidewalks. The existing improvements to the Piazza Logan and Gateway were construction in 1999 to 2000, as part of the city's effort to revitalize the downtown area. We're focusing on using a lot of these parts because we do not see this as a start over, but just enhancing what is already there. The city also intends that its farmer's market will be accommodated within the renovated spaces to remain a significant weekly event during the summer months. Many of the recommended program elements will provide a better environment to host the farmer's market while also opening opportunities for other events and daily activities to promote greater activation throughout the year. The city has been approved for a $1.4 million grant from the Washington State to construct the renovations on Piazza Logan Avenue and Gateway Park. Design work is being funded through the city's general fund. We are planning on these renovations to complete towards the end of the fourth quarter of 2026 in conjunction with the opening of the pavilion. And I touched on this, but the World Cup Legacy Square is also in this area, and it's an initiative that aims to leverage the world's largest sporting event to establish a vibrant, all-inclusive hub in Renton's downtown. The project intends to ensure accessibility for all regardless of financial constraints, demographics, or backgrounds. In keeping with the Civic Core Plan, it will serve as a new destination to attract more visitors to downtown Renton while offering city residents another opportunity to gather and explore downtown and its local businesses. This new outdoor community space will feature a Sounders soccer pitch, a jumbo screen for public viewing or major sporting events, a small stage for live entertainment, a picnic area, a business incubator retail space, event food truck zone, gateway entrance, and public art. The Legacy Square is exploring diverse year-round programming such as live music, sports broadcasts, pep rallies, art showcases, and meetups with the intention of offering activities and public access to events and sports. Schematic design for the site is in process, and we are doing public engagement this summer. We will be having a booth at the farmer's market over the summer for a series of, I think it's once a month, to solicit input from our community on desired activation events. We want to hear what our community, what types of events they would like to have on a regular basis in this space. We've applied for three different grant opportunities in the amount of $1.5 million. The plan for this is to create, to develop the facility in two phases. So Phase 1 will be in 2025, and will be all of the underground work and should be completed in late summer. And then the rest of the above-ground amenities will be completed after that with the goal of completion in March of 2026. If you can't see, that's our month, March of 2026.
Amanda, hopefully this next impactful project is one that you've had a chance to visit because it is already open, has been for several months. It's the Black River Cultural Arts Center. It's located in the west wing of the city center parking garage at Second and Logan. In alignment with the Civic Core Plan, the promotion of arts is at the forefront of our community initiatives downtown. Through collaborative efforts between city staff and the Renton Municipal Arts Commission, this ground floor commercial space within the city center parking garage has been transformed into a new arts center. Strategically located along Logan Avenue on the garage's west side, the space is designed to catalyze innovation in the creative economic sector and incubate artistic and cultural small businesses. The development, management, and operation of this space followed a thorough request for proposals process and creative, creative designs emerged as the selected organization. They were able to put a program together, move into the space, get it ready for the public, and had an official grand opening in October of 2023. The center serves as a welcoming space for nonprofits, artists, and arts organizations to network and connect, contributing to the growth of arts in Renton. The space is available for meetings, workshops, or exhibits, and the center provides opportunities for collaboration and creativity, artist connections, and a safe space for creatives to support each other. The Renton Art Lounge, which is hosted by the Renton Municipal Arts Commission, takes place at the center monthly on the third Wednesday of every month from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Another opportunity for you to come and enjoy a really lively exchange of ideas during that session every month. The center also offers monthly sessions with different local artists presenting skills or giving talks. And finally, the center aims to grow and support art businesses and organizations in Renton. So we think it's working out very well, and we're looking forward to that continuing on into 2025. The South Renton Transit Center, technically, the new location of the center is actually outside of downtown, but of course, its relocation from the Civic Core is pretty important to making sure that we can move forward with the development of the site where the Transit Center currently is located. Sound Transit's designing the new Transit Center. It's at Grady and Rainier, the northeast corner of the intersection, and it will replace the one that's in the Civic Core Heart Block, which is located between Second Burnett, Third and Logan. Sound Transit will also construct the new facility, and it'll be coutilized by Sound Transit and King County Metro. It primarily consists of a line of canopies, as you can see in the renderings here, and platforms to support buses along with an electric charging facility for KC Metro's fleet of electric buses. So there will be a lot of activity going on in the site. A surface parking lot will be constructed on the future site of a parking garage and mixed-use project, and that mixed-use project is anticipated to include affordable housing. The southern portion or the Grady frontage of the site will include a meandering landscape trail with points of interest, and we're really excited that Sound Transit came to the table and designed a really good public amenity on the south side of the site as well. The project design is generally completed this time. The 90% design drawings were submitted to staff in April, and it's currently under city review. A conditional use permit application is expected to be filed this week, so there's going to be a lot of review of this project coming up over the next several weeks. The current project tracking is that construction would be expected to be next year in quarter two or quarter three, and it would be expected to be complete in the second quarter of 2027, so about a two-year, maybe a little bit less construction period. The opening is expected in the second quarter of 2027. In that case, it's only anticipated to be KC Metro service. The Sound Transit Stride S1, which is the BRT that will connect downtown Bellevue to Renton, is expected to open in the third quarter of 2028. That particular facility needs a little bit more time to actually run the buses and track them and be ready to move over into the new Transit Center. Last week, we had a meeting with Sound Transit where they indicated they are already planning some public art in the canopy areas, and they've also decided to add a second public art component where they'll be adding public art to the surfaces within the parking lot in order to direct people better to the transit canopies where they need to pick up their buses. And as I mentioned, the Transit Center parking garage in a mixed-use project will be delivered in a future phase of the site development. The relocation of the Transit Center, as you can imagine, is very important to the core of downtown, so we're working really hard to keep Sound Transit on its current schedule so that it can open and complete and that we can then think more specifically about the Transit Center area that they'll be leaving behind in downtown. The expanded Renton High School campus is something that we're excited about, that the school district decided to keep the high school in the downtown area and to expand the site that they're currently on. They plan to reconstruct the high school campus by preserving portions of the exterior historic facade of the existing 1931 building. Plans include keeping the IKEA Performing Arts Center and adding a new main building adjacent to the IKEA Performing Arts Center. That new building will be oriented toward the South Street and Logan Avenue intersection, which puts it right across the street from the city center parking garage and therefore front and center connection to the Civic Core itself. We're excited about that. This is an opportunity to take advantage of the school campus's adjacency to downtown and truly make it part of the downtown district as opposed to it just feeling like it sits outside of the district itself. We anticipate new downtown streetscapes along Logan Avenue that would match the downtown streetscapes that we're putting in. The open spaces around the current campus will be reorganized and expanded. They will include lighted sports facilities and fields, both keeping some of what they have and adding some new ones as well. The new buildings will be located on the site in a way to allow construction to occur while the existing buildings remain in use. They have already gone through the pre-application process. Meeting was held on May 23rd. We currently anticipate that construction would start in the middle of 2027, so still a couple of years away, and that they would like to open the main part of the new building for students in the fall of 2029. Construction on portions of the site will continue through 2030. The critical path for the school district, of course, is property acquisition because of the larger site that they need to accomplish all of this, so they really can't start the permitting process until they've wrapped up acquisition. So we're excited to mention a new private development in downtown. We don't get a whole lot of those. They're having in the recent past. We're excited about an all-commercial project at the southeast corner of Third and Whitworth in downtown. This is the Lee Renton Commercial Building. Property owner and developer Andy Lee is deciding to use a property that he owns to demo a small building and utilize that space and a parking lot behind it to build a two-story, about a 7,300 square foot, two-story building. It'll have multiple tenant spaces. He's planning to have electric charging stations, sidewalk cafe seating, and as I said, it will be developed by the owner of the property itself. We're excited to have this project, albeit a little small. We think that it'll be a nice complement to the west end of downtown, where we've seen an awful lot of increased interest in new businesses opening over the last few years. Okay, going into the next section that we're going to go over, the infrastructure and public art projects. These are things that we want to give you a recap of what's been happening over the last year. The first one are the streetscape improvements that are just wrapping up at Williams Avenue, the 200 block. This is between Second and Third Street. We have generally completed the construction. The contractor is in the throes of the punch list, which is always an interesting time for contractors, but we were able to start construction last October and substantially complete the work this past March. Included in this project were new and replacement sidewalks, curb and gutter, streetlights with street banner and flower basket arms, and those street poles. Streetlights include irrigation for those flower baskets, litter receptacles, street trees with new grates, landscape strips with fencing and new street pavement and markings. The project is also featuring something that's a little new to downtown, where we're using the loading zones that are striped out on these blocks, and we're allowing the public to park in them, starting at 6:00 PM through 6:00 the following morning so that we can increase the on-street parking capacity in downtown during the times when we have a lot of interest for nighttime dining and shopping. Go back over to Amanda to continue this section now.
Another block that is in the Mista construction is the 400 block of Burnett Avenue South. So far, the project has completed in-ground infrastructure work to replace the waterline along with new curb, gutter, storm drains, and street paving. New scored sidewalks will be poured beginning this June. Streetlights are being installed at the end of June or in July. A new bicycle rack, bench, and litter receptacle will also be installed, and then all the trees are being retained within the landscaping strip and will include new bark at the bottom. The downtown streetscape standards promote the addition of public art in sidewalk and street areas, especially as they are upgraded with new improvements. The Civic Core Plan also promotes downtown as an arts and culture center and recommends using public art as an element to connect various downtown destinations and walking routes to increase the interest as pedestrians roam around. For the Williams Avenue streetscape, we were able to include two public art components. One component was brought forward by the owner, well, it's the Cortona Art Plaque. It's the bronze bird statue. This is placed in front of the Cortona Building. The owner provided the bronze plaque with the birds that was installed in the sidewalk adjacent to the building, Mindshare Work Lounge entrance on Williams. The owner hopes that other similar plaques may be located in other downtown blocks and form a walking path throughout the area to explore downtown destinations and connect them together. The second component is the installation of a vintage streetlight on the east side of Williams. This pedestrian-level streetlight style was installed throughout the downtown area in the 1970s, but later replaced with taller poles designed to better accommodate vehicles. The Kajini family, which owns the building next to where the streetlight will be installed, graciously donated one of the poles that they had acquired from the city years ago. The artists at the firm of Western Neon were hired to restore the vintage streetlight to its original condition with the color, with the original color scheme, but with new electrical to accommodate LED lighting. The lighting will also have the ability to change colors, similar to the Erasmus Dragon sculpture on the rooftop near Wells and Third. Look for the vintage streetlight to be installed on Williams towards the end of June. The Renton Downtown Partnership has been working over the past year to incorporate a new mural on the Bank of America building at South Third and Burnett. RDP issued a call for artists, which resulted in the selection of a muralist, Carl Martinez. Carlos has been hired to create a destination, original public artwork representing Renton's diverse community and celebrating the beauty of its residents' natural heritage. The building owner and occupant, Bank of America, has also applied for permits to do exterior building renovations to include new paint color scheme, signage, decorative wall accent panels at the street level, and building entrances and lighting. RDP and the Bank of America are working together to make the mural a reality. The conceptual design of the mural shown here is inspired by Carlos's frequent trips to Renton and the welcoming embrace he feels from the city's diverse population. Carlos envisioned the various countries as a community, a cornucopia of flowers living together harmoniously. His design portrays the national flowers of the countries growing out of the building amongst native flowers of Washington. The mural is anticipated to be colorful, display and to showcase Renton's culturally diverse, cultural diversity and its tentatively entitled Renton's Bouquet. Images of the mural would be located on the building as shown here. The parties are working to expand the extent of the mural so it is larger on the building's south third roofline. Carlos will be visiting various Renton neighborhoods to engage residents on the mural design as he works towards a final design. Bank of America hopes to complete its exterior renovations by October to include the mural.
And continuing on about how big public art is a big theme for downtown these days, I'll mention again that the Civic Core Plan promotes public art as an essential component of downtown, both as a programming element in public spaces, but also as creating opportunities for art to be the destination and attraction for people to actually come to downtown to begin with. The plan emphasizes that art should occur at a variety of scales, variations in design, and tell multiple stories. Downtown's growing art scene, whether the visual or the performance variety, means that arts and culture are very much a part of the Civic Core Plan's implementation. This past year has been no exception to the growth of arts in downtown, including the arts projects that Amanda just mentioned. We've also got several new murals that are popping up in downtown, including one that's on the vehicle Renton Licensing Office, as well as across Topkin Park to the south on the building, just to the south of the park. Our fire hydrant art project, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, continues to grow. There are actually only a few remaining hydrants left in the downtown district that have not been incorporated into that project. The desire is to extend the project north to South Second and up to the river over the next few years. This project is managed by the Arts Commission in collaboration with the South Renton Connection Neighborhood Group. Public art has also been presented through events and art engagements from things like the Renton Roadshow, pop-up performances that continue holding events throughout the year, buskers and strolling groups during big shopping holidays in downtown. The photo in the lower right-hand corner of your screen is actually the Dragon Landing Celebration. I think it was the fifth anniversary this year, this past April, on Wells Avenue for the landing of the dragon in downtown. We also have the Renton Art Lounge that I mentioned earlier at the Art Center, and we also are working with a lot of partners in downtown to expand the arts offerings in downtown as well. The Arts Commission is currently collaborating with a lot of different stakeholders, including the downtown partnership, individual businesses, the Art Center, the farmer's market, and city rent and programming staff to support summer programming in downtown. This will include organizing concerts, of course, the River Days, celebrations, and cultural activities at the pavilion, as well as hosting pop-ups and other events in downtown that have arts as a heavy emphasis in them. Additionally to all that, the Arts Commission this year will debut something called Craft Cruise that will be a major new addition to the Return to Renting Car Show this year. So we're excited to have a nuance there, so we want to encourage you to participate in that in July. Time to go back over to Amanda. She's going to talk you through some of the projects that are on the horizon for downtown.
One of the Civic Core, one of the Civic Core Plan-inspired projects is the Rent Connector, which Council has seen in presentations in the past. As a reminder, the project is a new urban trail or greenway that creates a signature Civic Core and downtown green spine and regional trail connection between the Cedar River Trail, Lake to Sound Trail, Lake Washington Loop Trail, and the East Side Rail Corridor for pedestrians and cyclists between the Cedar River, City Hall, and the new South Renton Transit Center to the south. The project is still in the design phase. No specific construction funding has been identified, and the construction date has not been established. The downtown civic plan also identified a new wayfinding system that would help better direct people to get and navigate within the downtown district. The system includes a family of signs that work together to identify the district boundaries and its amenities and attractions. Approximately 30 downtown destinations will be featured by name and icons on the signs. The system's first phase consisted of the two gateway signs already installed at South Third and Rainier and South Fourth and Burnett, along with a pedestrian kiosk located in Piazza Park. Over the past year, we have been working on determining locations for and designing a second phase, which will include approximately 20 advanced directional and vehicle signs throughout the greater downtown and Civic Core areas. Additional design work is pending, along with the decision on how to implement the second phase, hopefully later this year. The second phase is funded through the city's current general fund budget.
So the Civic Core Plan promotes the support and success of small businesses as important to achieving many of the plan's objectives and recommendations. It really wouldn't matter what we're doing to build in downtown if we aren't bringing the businesses along with the maturation of downtown as a place to come and visit and enjoy. The plan reasons that by increasing the attractiveness and desirability of the area will attract more businesses and residents to the area. The plan further recommends the importance of developing strategies and programs that promote small business attraction. that promote small business attraction and retention. Uh, there have been many efforts over the past year to provide our local small business owners the support they need, especially with seminars and programs uh that provide best practices for starting, running and expanding their businesses. Some of the major ones that I'd like to, that we'd like to highlight tonight. Uh, back in February, we held a storefront design and lighting seminar at the New Art Center. Uh, the seminar featured the nationally regarded firm of Front Door Back. Uh, included for businesses were elements of best practices for successful storefronts, the importance of lighting to effectively and attractively showcase your business, how to light up your storefront as part of making downtown a safer place for visitors and shoppers to explore, and what bulbs and light fixtures to use and which ones to avoid. Uh, the seminar helped reinforce the civic core plan's emphasis on creating and engaging and activated downtown district through local businesses and destinations to draw visitors in and to keep them coming back. The seminar helped the attending businesses learn more about creating better curb appeal, increasing their visibility and providing a sense of safety and well-being for patrons through the critical component of appropriate lighting storefronts and downtown streets. Um, although it's not noted on this slide, uh, the Renton Downtown Partnership is in the midst of its second year of facade improvement grant program that it's been running. Um, it's been offering grants for business owners to refresh the look of their storefronts, which we think will help attract more people to come to downtown.
The Renton Empowerment Think Tank Series will have its third edition uh with a focus on the city's center and community on June, this Friday, June seventh. Downtown is part of the city's center community. Renton Small Business Empowerment Think Tank is a dynamic and collaborative program dedicated to supporting and strengthening small businesses in the Renton area. It unites the local entrepreneurs, community leaders and business enthusiasts to foster innovation and idea sharing. These are held every two months in a different economic center spread throughout the city. And following up on the success of the 2023 pitch, the Renton Downtown Partnership is coming to an end of its 2024 version. The Main Street Pitch Competition is a business pitch competition to help entrepreneurs grow so our local Renton downtown's community can thrive. The competition includes five workshops leading up to a live pitch. By attending these workshops, they will have the necessary skills to take the first critical steps in starting a successful business or expanding on an existing one. There will be five finalists that will pitch on the live competition on June eleventh at the downtown's Renton Civic Core or Civic Theater, sorry, cores on my mind, Civic Theater. Uh, first place will receive five thousand, second place will receive three thousand, and the people's choice will receive one thousand. It's free to attend the pitch. Um, there is a registration, which we can get to everyone. From last year's competition, many of the participants that um were awarded or succeeded through the program um have been opening in the downtown. Drumroll Wine and Tomato Tomato and Crown have both opened a space in the downtown uh Renton area. Crown Yoga opened a physical space in Benson. And then Renton Mediation and Robot Mom Creations are both teaching regular classes at the Renton Community Center. And the Puget Sound Sider Company um expanded to the Pike Place Market in downtown Seattle with day tables. We hope that the success and progress of implementing the civic core plan is truly showcasing what you see in the downtown. Over the past several years, downtown has seen many new businesses choose a downtown as its preferred location to open their new or relocating their business, as well as expanding and growing their existing downtown locations. Here are some notable businesses that have opened in downtown in the past year and hope that the Renton community continues to visit them, as well as the, the over the two hundred businesses I call downtown home. And finally, we'd like to highlight the many partners that the city has been working with to implement the civic core plan, especially over the past year. The civic core plan recognized that the city is best positioned to seek out partnerships with other organizations that can help provide expertise or funding to move forward with several of the projects and the programs that we have highlighted today. A big shout out to our city departments as everyone has played a part in the work and the projects. Public Works, Parks, CED, Legal and Finance have all been key players in these projects. And of course, we would like to recognize the city council's contributions in advancing the civic corps' plans and mission by approving the project funding and staff positions that are needed, as well as supporting the projects as they have come up for discussion.
That completes the presentation tonight, so we're happy to take any questions or listen to any feedback that you have. Appreciate your patience. Hopefully that didn't take too long. But uh, open on questions now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, John. Thank you, Amanda, very much for the presentation. I, I do, I want to start off with a question. Can you go back to the World Cup Legacy Square uh slide, please? Um, so I think this is a great idea. I do have a couple of questions. I have a question about, have we thought about what we're going to do around security? Um, and we're talking about putting the jumbo screen up, which I think is going to come at, you know, cost. What are we going to do to protect that asset? Have we thought about what we're going to do as far as protecting the assets and what we're going to do as far as security for that?
Yes, there has been discussions about that. We haven't come to a conclusion, but there is uh multi-departmental teams coming up with activation and security and maintenance and all of those as a, a long-term plan.
I would appreciate it. I'm sure my colleagues would if you guys would come back with that information once you have it. Uh, Councilmember Alberton, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President here. I, actually, my question is related to, to that because I love the World Cup Square idea and all that kind of good stuff, but um the, you had mentioned that it was um this outdoor type of um, you know, situation. I guess when I first heard it, I, I wasn't thinking that, is this going to be the plan right now in a design and outdoor open, not enclosed at all? Which then speaks, of course, to, you put a screen up, you're just asking for issues. It's not an if, it's just a when. But that's the, I guess, part one. Is this, is this, we're talking about an open-air plaza type deal? Okay. Part two, I think that's an incredibly bad idea, no offense. Um, partly because I, you know, you know, one of the reasons they were, were doing the pavilion and all that is year-round activation. I don't see that being year-round active when the weather gets bad, especially for doing things and viewing things and all that. And I don't know if we're totally married to that, but even if it, it was enclosed, but if there's one side that just totally opens up like a, you know, accordion style opening or something like that, I think, I, I think we're just locking ourselves in if we do that to a fifty percent you true utility uh at all. And then connected to that, I wonder how married we are to the Gateway Park, which I think is really stretching the imagination to call that area a park. Why are we not thinking about that whole footprint from a World Cup Square that maybe incorporates uh a, you know, an enclosed space and then and an open space for some of the things? Has that been discussed? I mean, while this is in the design process, I figure this might be the first, the best time to talk about it, but I'm curious as to the conversations around that.
Welcome to be on our team for sure.
All right. Pull up a chair to the.
No, we have discussed that and there was um discussion of having one of those larger tents that is more of a, you know, you can set up during the winter months that could be used for other activities that, to take care of the winter part. Um, we are looking at, I don't know, it's not on your screen, um, on the Piazza Logan Avenue Gateway Park renovations. Um, we just finished a conceptual design that actually incorporates all three areas um as kind of one continuous design. So we're trying not to separate the pieces and kind of trying to think of it as a holistic piece, um plaza, public space. Um, so part of the elements of Gateway would play into the World Cup Square area, so they, they are connected. It's just as for a full structure, no, that we have not explored that at this time, but we can certainly look at that.
Councilmember Vaughn, Councilmember Perez, and then Councilmember Rivera.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I have a few questions, but I'll just go with my first one. Um, just on the same page in terms of the Plaza Logan Avenue um Gateway Park renovations, um, you indicated public restroom. We're at a very nascent stage, right? So this is addition to the restroom that we have right behind or side of the pavilion and then have you explore a certain type and, and it's a follow-up of like, again, it's very early on, but kind of this, the hours in which it's open. Um.
Yes, um, so we have looked at a couple of different options, one being the Portland Lou that they've installed in a couple of the parks. Um, however, due to the expense of those, it would be one stall in this area. Um, the Pavilion Market, um, the operator is looking at using those more of the restrooms for the people that are partaking in the pavilion as opposed to a public restroom. Um, there is no other public restroom in that area that is available at this time for the public. Um, the, another option that we've been exploring and right now everything's on the table because we're still in the design phases is one of those, um, I don't know, like, I don't know, I don't know a fancy way to say it, so I'm just going to call it a restroom trailer, where it has multiple restrooms in it, um, and then they can be serviced. Um, potentially sho- nearing a street where it could be serviced from the street and could live there or stay there, but would be locked at certain times or have certain hours to ma- it's to support those areas. So if those areas are not being activated or in use, then the restroom should not be activated or in use.
Councilmember Perez.
I'm here. Thank you very much for your presentation, John. Always a pleasure to see you. Thank you very much for everything that you have done for this um city. I heard that you're retiring and I'm going to be missing you. But your print is going to be always in this area and I appreciate your professionalism and everything that you have given us during the last more than a decade, especially the downtown core. Um, my question is a follow-up from the, from the uh Legacy Square. Uh, we have had these conversations at committee level and some of these questions have come, but where is the funding coming from this?
Applied for a one point five million dollar grant, um, with the, I think, federal or, yeah, federal um grant that we should be hearing if we're moving forward on that. That is where the funding is coming. We're, fingers crossed, we're getting the funding. That's our hope and dream right now.
So this is depending on if we get the grant or not, or?
I think there's options to move forward. We may have to scale back the project depending on the level of funding that we receive. Um, I still think there's value um in the project, um, especially as we're preparing for the World Cup, but it would, some of the improvements may have to scale back based on the funding.
Thank you.
And Rivera, Councilmember O'Halloran.
Also, thank you for an amazing presentation. This is very exciting to see all of the development and the pictures and I'm just, I'm pretty stoked. So I'm looking forward to 2026. I'm going to slightly, I do agree with my colleagues regarding um this park. I don't necessarily agree entirely, actually do like the idea, but I was wondering if rather than a jumbo screen, if the idea of a projector or rolling projector, because we just, there's a, in my, from my recollection, there's a big white wall that could easily just be used as for, uh, for projection instead, and then you don't have that security issue. It's kind of was my thought that came to mind. I'm wondering if that was an idea on your team.
Yes, and that by our consultant as well. Um, there is challenges in the projection, especially if you're going to be showing and projecting games during daylight or sunlight hours. So it is difficult to see the projection, even if it is a giant white wall, um, to be put on there. Um, the, the wall is not, we would have to do some stability work on the wall to be able to attach anything to it. So it would just have to be a freestanding screen or just a straight projection. Um, the concern with the projection is, you know, getting it set up and getting it out there in time for the events and, and other items. So that, I think, once again, all options are still on the table and we're exploring them all, but the projection idea has come up and we're just trying to figure out if it's best to go with the screen or the projection.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I just came back from some time in Europe and um this concept of public restrooms is, it was, it's interesting to travel now being, having been on utilities and public works and um uh planning and development, but, but one thing that we ran into over and over again was this, this concept of turnstile restrooms where you actually have to pay a buck um to go through the turnstile and, but you get a coupon that you can use, you know, so you pay a buck and you get a fifty cent coupon. You can use that inside the event space to purchase things. You can collect up to however many. You can get all your friends to give you theirs. Um, and it, it helps not only to pay for the facility and the maintenance and the cleaning and all of that stuff, but it also regulates, I, I mean, you can turn the machines off so that you can't get in there, you know, during certain hours. Um, uh, but the idea is that you give back not only to paying for the facility, but you also give back money to go spend it while you're here. And I don't, I, I don't know anything about what it would take to install such a thing, but it was such a great idea and it was everywhere that we went, everywhere we went. And um, and then there's always the old-fashioned have somebody sit there in the restroom and you give them the dollar for their cleaning services. And, you know, it, it basically, it just regulates who, who goes in and out of there. So anyway, just thought I'd throw that out there.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
Following that idea, I always was very curious if that is legal or not in the United States because uh in Mexico, you have to pay to be able to use the restroom, a significant amount. I mean, it was just like insignificant. It was just like one peso to get in. But if you don't have the one peso, you're looking for change everywhere and, 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 and you don't get in, you know? And yes, you have the lady with the table, because I have never seen that in the United States. I always thought maybe this country is illegal to permit, you not allow someone to use the restroom, because I have never seen it implemented in the country, never anywhere that I have been. And yes, it's also very popular in Europe, but I was wondering about that, you know? Because I know that downtown Seattle twenty years ago tried to put those pay things and then it, it, everybody burned them because they started using them. They paid the dollar and then they went inside and did other activities and it didn't work. But um, but anyway, I was just, you mentioned it and just brought it back. It does memories to me.
That is a great research question.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I have a question regarding to the public market and food hall. Uh, in terms of the small vendor stall, stalls and all the vendors, um, has, because you mentioned the operator, so are we having an operator of the market and then the tenants would be their tenants or they're actually tenants of the cities like, like the airport? Just want to clarify that.
So, and we're working on an operator lease and a user agreement with someone to run the market. Um, and then they would run their, they would have oper- they would have leases with the tenants, not the city.
Okay, so I have a follow-up.
Uh, if it's, yeah, because I.
In terms of this question, um, so you said we have someone, so have we gone through the process for RF request or proposal, or how, how does that process work, if you can enlighten us?
We did the RFP in two thousand um eighteen or nineteen, I believe. Um, and we've been working with uh an operator. I've chosen not to say his name. I'm happy to, I have to, but um, we've been working with the operator since that time and um we meet with them frequently. They're part of the design process and we're also working with um attorneys and a company to work on an operator lease agreement with, with that person.
So they would then choose the tenants. So we're basically just, the operator is our tenant and the other, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McGurven, Councilmember Rivera.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and echoing the thoughts on the great presentation. Uh, always great to see progress on a plan that we helped pass and, and, and good progress at that, I would say. Um, on that note, I wanted to ask a question maybe of some of the things that weren't in the presentation. So the plan was broken out into kind of three categories of quick wins, uh, short term and then mid-long term. Understanding we had COVID kind of in the middle of that, so I'm gonna, you know, say loose guidelines, but I would say where, where were some of those early things in the plan that maybe we drew up and thought would be a great idea that didn't come to fruition? Um, that are left hanging or things that you would like to see that we just haven't got done for whatever reason yet? Are there items that are kind of off the presentation um that you would have, you, as you're heading towards retirement, say, wow, we, we should have got that one done?
Um, I, maybe uh not so much, uh, I think the projects that were really important for downtown are being touched on. Um, I think maybe the approach to tackling them could be better thought out. Uh, the, the doing one block of streetscape at a time is not a very uh smart way of accomplishing those and that's really been driven more so. And that's really been driven more so by the available funding that we've had and the fact that we're using multiple years of funding to do it. So it's not because the city is necessarily, you know, not doing it the right way. It's a, it's kind of, you know, a decision that's being made along the way. But I would think that we're at the end, this block of Williams and then Burnett. We will have utilized the money that we've gotten in the grants for that. So I think for the, for the future, maybe thinking more specifically about doing it with multiple blocks in play, but with the same type of process that we used at Williams and has been used in some of the other projects to outreach the businesses to lessen the impact on them while the disruption during the construction. So that's one thing that I would suggest that maybe be considered a little bit more specifically into the future. I think that there are some, the great thing about the way the plan is moving forward now is that there's a little bit of everything going on, but it touches on, you know, we're not just doing physical improvements, we're also working with the businesses as well. We're also working on the partnership so that the city is not towing, you know, this project or this plan all on its own, which is never intended for that. So I think that there's some great opportunities there that should, should continue. I would say that overall, I think that for this, for downtown to be successful ultimately, I think the city needs a position of a downtown manager. We need somebody that actually has a position that can kind of manage and control all this from the larger, kind of higher perspective to make sure that everything is going to melt together very nicely. But also is, you know, out there advocating for the funding, making sure that the council members get the details that they need when the funding is, is asked. You are going to see some, I probably fairly significant requests for the Pavilion Project, I think, in the next two-year budget in order to keep it on that schedule. So I think having somebody that is handling, we have a, an enhanced cleaning services contract that our economic development division manages, so it could be somebody that's overseeing that while they're also being the liaison to the downtown partnership. So I think a position where you kind of put, you know, those responsibilities into the hands of a central person that you can depend upon to work amongst the departments, but also have good relationships with the mayor's office and, and the council offices as well to make sure that everything is well coordinated.
Councilmember Rivera.
That's kind of a follow-up to the Pavilion Project. I'm looking at everything and this might be a silly question, so please forgive me. But losing kind of our event space for the public market and food hall, do we have an event space in mind for the downtown core or nearby?
We're evaluating our existing city facilities and working with the facilities team to identify maybe other opportunities within our existing buildings that might be able to do some of those larger events. So we, we're definitely aware that we've lost our large event space and we're looking at options to see what we can do to offer people at a low cost or at cost.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Councilmember Vaughn.
Yeah, I have a follow-up to my question in terms of the public market and the food hall. I, I know it was kind of decided in 2018, but what was the thought process around having an operator operating our property? But then we don't really have control of who's getting in as tenants, because we're trying to build, right? And so I feel like there's, obviously there's this placement of small businesses and now we don't have control. So what is the thought around having this individual operator operating and, and what is the process in terms of the lease at this point?
I would say that has evolved since 2018. I don't think it was solidified then. We've moved towards that, I guess, structure as the, it is a city-owned facility, a city-owned building. So we're not going to turn over the building to someone, so we've chosen to lease it to someone else. The person that we're working, the operator that we've chosen is very small business-minded. And part of our hope with the operator agreement and the lease is that we identify the types of businesses that go in there, like we can put rules on types of businesses we don't want in our downtown or we don't allow. Those can be put in that operator agreement or the lease to have some control over that. There's been talk of even the operator would like to get our feedback on who's coming, what businesses are coming. So even though it's a lease and straight operator and it's in that, that realm, there's still the partnership that we're going to be having with the operator and this, this market. We, we need it to be successful. He wants it to be successful. So it's, it's going to continue to be a partnership as it grows.
And last question, follow-up. What is the, I guess, the time of the lease? Is it a five-year lease? Is it what? Or what, I guess it's still in a stage in forming, right, in terms of that?
So it, our hope is that it's a long-term lease. So, but there will be, the goal is, we're working on figuring out the financial structure of what that looks like and that may determine what the, the lease terms are. The lease terms with the tenants, there is a plan to have some that are shorter terms, so we, there can be rotating people in there or if they can stay for a year and then move, move, move to a bigger space or something. The ultimate vision is really to have some of these smaller ones move out into some of the downtown brick and mortars. So there really is a hope that we can grow this, with, with these businesses.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Amanda. Commedia Hall is adjourned.
Thank you very much.